All right. It is four o'clock and we will call the Curville City Council Workshop to order. Thank you, everybody, for being here. And Shelley, if you will, read us in.
A member of the public may address city council regarding an item on this agenda. Comments must be relevant to the agenda item. This is not intended to be a question and answer session. Prior to speaking, each speaker must fill out a speaker request form and submit it to the city secretary. The speaker request form must be submitted before the meeting is called to order. Each speaker is limited to four minutes. We do have one citizen speaker signed up, Peggy McKay.
Peggy McKay, 103 West Chester, Curville. I'm not sure, after talking to Shelley, if this applies to this particular meeting, but it has to do with the water rates that were discussed at the last workshop and inflation. And I trust that as this budget comes forth, that it is going to be kind to the citizens because of inflation. And they say we have not hit the worst part of it yet. So this relates to the fees, the five and a half percent increase in the water in the sewer. And I'm concerned about that along with all the other rates that affect so many of the citizens. And also, the street use fee. When it started at two percent, what did the city get? About 275,000 to put towards streets? And the last was over 500,000. Since at the last meeting, water was the issue and the concern that meeting the budget and the needs of the two, melting the two, and there was concern that it would be tight. My request is that maybe we could forego the street use fee until we see how the inflation is coming in. And anything that is extra in the water fund would remain there. The benefit to the street use fee is in the general fund. But with that expense to the water fund, is that a possibility that we could relieve some of the pressure from staff and the citizens, actually, by foregoing the street use fee this year? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's the end of the citizen speakers.
All right, very good. So we are ready for who's on tonight.
Just provided a brief introduction, Mayor, for Stuart gets up. Tonight, the subject is not really water rates, not directly, anyway. It's really about the water system and the wastewater system and really the treatment and collection system. So we won't be talking about water supply, although, obviously, given the current drought conditions, that's been a significant topic of conversation in the community. And fortunately, the community has made significant investments for many decades in its water supply system. However, once we collect that, we then have to treat it. And we've got to send it to customers, and then the customers send it back to us, and we collect it and then send it to wastewater treatment plants. So there's a whole cycle to that, and that's really going to be the main topic today. We, this is a follow-up from some significant update to our water wastewater plan that the community embarked in back in the 2014 timeframe and began to make some significant investments in its system at that time. And we are continuing to make significant investments. And those are, of course, indirectly related to water rates because we do have to pay as a business in being able to supply that product for our citizens. We do have rising costs, and, of course, part of that is rising construction costs. And so we'll talk to you more today about the extensive work that staff and Freezing Nichols had done in getting that plan updated and really looking at the go-forward for continuing to be able to reliably provide that water and collect that wastewater for the community for the next 25 years. So with that, I'd ask Mr. Stuart Barron for the brief of the city council.
And yeah, so I, at first, I thought this was going to be our update until I realized it was Parks and Rec. And so do we, will there be an online and/or physical copy of the update available at some?
Yes, so this is essentially, this is kind of a status update, right? So that document isn't fully finalized yet, but we wanted to be, bring to you guys basically where we're at in the process. And there's, we've got a little bit more to come, and we wanted to be able to get some of y'all's input as well.
Okay, gotcha.
Make sure we're on track.
Gotcha, thank you.
So one good, there we go, one good introduction deserves another. I'm here to introduce our consultants, and they've done the work for us. So they're going to give y'all an update on our waiter, water wastewater master plan. Ethan Shires and Maya Doops, is that right? Doops did this work for Freezing Nichols for us. And they, they're, he's gonna, they'll very well explain our water system. But let me give you a little history before we get there, so y'all can kind of see where we came from, from back in 2008. It's pretty close to when I moved back, when I first moved into City Hall. Give you a little personal history, too, while we're at it, it's all kind of fun, right? We moved into City Hall, and there was a big deficit in our water system. I came from the wastewater plant itself, and I was like, man, boss, there is a lot of trouble out there. We need to, we need to buy the guys new trucks. And so at that time, Howard Jackson was sitting in the chair, and he said, we'll do a rate study. And so that rate study kind of culminated into a full-blown master plan, where we needed, we knew that the system was in bad shape, at least from the ground level, and that we needed to kind of start looking at that, find out a road path to get it operational for our system. So in 2008, we did a rate study. We did a system analysis out in the, out in the network system, both water and wastewater. And then we did the master plan, or excuse me, the rate study, the evaluation, and also the CIP. Came up with a list of projects. Came up with a really big number of work that needed to be done. So we bid off a piece of those, the worst ones, did the risk-benefit analysis, and decided this is what needs to happen when we need to update this plan about every five years. So that was out in the network. The next one we did was in 2012. Slide forward, I'm just gonna keep up. 2012, we did it at the wastewater treatment plant, same problems were going on over there. It's very hard to tell just by looking at something in these components, which one is near system capacity and which one's in the worst shape. And so we hired Freezing Nichols again to evaluate each plant. 2012 was the wastewater, 2014 was the water. They go in, do an evaluation, how bad is the condition? What is the most critical piece? If you only had a million dollars to spend and you had $10 million worth of need, what do you buy first? And so they did that analysis for us, and they gave us the roadmap as to what they would do at both of our two plants. In 2013, we also did an own call modeling service with them, where they helped us with developers that come in and evaluate our system to determine the impacts of that development on our system. So you can tell this has been going over a period of time, right? We started out in the field, went to the plants, now we're going to go back out in the field. In 2014, they did the reuse, reuse water study for us as well. That's when we, that ended up in the reused water pond that's out there on Spur 100 now. In 2018, there was enough interest in it from the community and all the reports that we've done and the benefit of it and the chronualization of those projects, that even in the, in the comprehensive plan, they came up as an action item. Y'all, we need to continue to do this. It's such a benefit to the city to know what our future is, help us with our budgeting, figure out which components need to be fixed first and where they're at. And so in 2022, we hired Freezing Nichols again to do our water and wastewater update. This one, again, is not out in the plant. This, we've gone back out into the distribution system. Curville's growing, and so every development that comes in has an impact on our system. And that impact needs to be incorporated into the model, and so we can verify that the, that the system is still handling all that development appropriately. So with that, that kind of gives you a little history of where, where we've been and where we are to now. Today, they're going to talk about that out in the system, some aging infrastructure that we have, some old pipes that are out there. We've, we've pulled in the data from the previous two studies, from the water and the wastewater treatment plant analysis, and kind of pulled all that together into a CIP, which will get to it towards the end. But without, I won't steal any more of his thunder, I'll let him walk you through the whole process. I will bring Ethan Shires up, and he'll tell you all about it. And I'll be back at the end to answer more questions.
Thanks, sir.
Yeah, this one here?
It's perfect, perfect. Let me just test it out here, make sure I know what I'm doing. Okay, Mayor, Council, thank you for the time. As Stuart said, I'm Ethan Shires, I'm the project manager on the water and wastewater master plan. So I'll kind of give a brief overview, and then we're going to do kind of a high-level, run through the project and all the different steps that we took to get there. I do just want to reiterate and kind of iterate a couple of times, if you're not familiar. There's water distribution, wastewater collection. So the way that we like to say that is how the water comes out of your tap, and then what happens when it goes down the drain. Not water supply, not reuse, not some of this other stuff, a little bit different. So in general, when we do a planning study like this, it consists of three major parts. The first is data collection. We want as much data as we can. We're big kind of analysis-focused in making sure we have the most up-to-date information. The second piece is perform analysis on that. So we'll kind of step through a couple of different, you know, analyses that we performed on both systems and kind of walk you through what that process looks like. And then, lastly, it's provide recommendations. So we've been working hard at work for a year and a half now with staff, making sure that we have all the information on your system and are evaluating those systems as best that we can. And ultimately, then providing those recommendations that make the most sense to how we want to kind of manage those systems from a proactive manner moving to the future. So to kind of jump into that, all of this starts with, as Stuart mentioned, the 2050 Curville Comp Plan, or Comprehensive Plan, I should say. Y'all spent a lot of time back in 2018 going through that information and looking at catalyst areas and determining where developments may or may not occur. Kind of how, as a city, y'all are identifying how you want to grow. Well, that impacts the water and wastewater systems as well. We want to make sure that we use that information. So it's just a brief summary of the kind of comp plan and the information that we pulled from that from 2050 Curville. So I do kind of want to point out, just to kind of show you the map here, that's the, and the information that we're showing. So the catalyst areas that were identified in those plan are those kind of shaded or hatched areas with the numbers on them. So we took those catalyst areas y'all identified. We then identified any potential vacant parcel or for, potential for development within those areas. Those are shown in blue. And then the parcels in pink or purple, whatever that color is there, is kind of known developments, potential development stuff that a planning staff or engineering staff or public works have kind of heard of. And we've had discussions, we wanted to make sure that those were accounted for as well. So lots of potential for growth, you guys have kind of that potential. We did also look at kind of historically what that, what that growth rate has been over the last 10, 20 years. The answer is not much, right? We tracked right about a 1% growth rate, and that's back from about 20 years or so. So I kind of threw some numbers up there just to give you an idea. If we projected for all of the potential areas within the, both the blue and the pink areas to develop, that's going to result in those projections, I can't quite read it, but it's a large number of growth there in, in that area. So y'all, based off of that historic growth rate and a 1% growth rate, you're not going to reach build-out, what we would constitute as build-out, till 2080, I believe it was? So a long way down the road, right? So we don't want to get there yet. We're focused mostly on the short term and kind of the next 10 to 25-year window. But we have an eye out for that long-term future of where the city's going to be in the next 50 to 100 years, right? So we incorporated all that information and kind of show our projections there. And really what this amounts to is we're really only projecting about units or connections. So those are new customers. Any other questions, Joe?
Vacant infill area, what does that mean?
Yeah, so that's, we, when we were going through this presentation, we kind of talked through, okay, so how do we best define this area? Basically, it's, you spent all this work developing these catalyst areas, right? You identified these areas that you know have the potential to develop, or at least the most potential for development. A lot of those areas, especially if you look at like number one, they're kind of in the city center. Well, they're mostly developed, right? So it's not like a big, you know, thousand-acre community is going to come in right smack in downtown. So we were trying to identify potential developments and what that would look like. We used the zoning and the land use identified in the comp plan to kind of project out what those developments would be. So for something, example, in, in that kind of historic area would be, you know, maybe it's a vacant parcel that doesn't have a home on it that is zoned for a single family, could be a new customer. Or maybe it's a strip center or something like that.
The reason I'm asking, if I'm understanding this map correctly, and area identified is nine, the Shrine University, and the blue vacant infill area is a cemetery.
Yeah, so some of that, that's part of our process is, obviously, cemeteries are not going to redevelop. But the way we kind of combed through that information from a land use standpoint was they were all kind of clumped into those. So it was really just looking at kind of holistically how the system could develop. And I do want to be clear, we're not saying cemeteries are going to develop, okay? So it's just a little bit of a kind of error in the process.
They do tend to fill up, but.
That's right, yeah, but they're not sewer or water customers, yeah. So, and to be fair, irrigation, right, and that's part of this. So that's, that's why they're shown in that way, but yeah, we're not, we're not anticipating development there.
One of the big shifts of focus, as you recall from Curville 2050, was really, and influenced this effort, this master planning effort, was a refocus to the interior of the city and within the existing city limits and development intensification within our city limits right now, rather than maybe some of the previous master plans, which had focused more on potential development outside of the, of the existing city limits. And so we've really tried to bifurcate those two within this process to talk about what it's going to take to continue to maintain the system right now, as it exists, versus new growth and what that impact might be.
And I'm glad that you, that you did that because, you know, on the southeast, that's where we've got a lot of interest right now. So even though it's not here, doesn't mean that it's not going to happen.
That's right, absolutely. Yeah, this is a great question, yeah, I appreciate it. And again, if you guys have questions, feel free to kind of jump in and chime in. This is absolutely a discussion, so I appreciate that, Joe. I do want to kind of add, where is I going with this? So, so we're looking at these projected developments, a little bit, it's kind of crystal ball, right? We don't know what's going to happen, but we're working with staff and trying to identify what those potentials are. And we'll get to this when we get to the recommendation section. Well, really, we're kind of identifying two major areas. The first is, okay, we have an existing system with existing customers. How do we best serve them and continue that high level of service into the future? And then the second piece is, okay, we've got development interests. We know that there's some potential development and, you know, some kind of larger communities or customers to come in. How best do we serve those and kind of separating those out? So I don't want to jump too far ahead, but we will get there, so I think those are great questions, so. Oh, I guess the last thing I wanted to note there, approximately, we're projecting about 4,000 new connections in the 25 periods. So that's that 1% growth rate, so just keep that in the back of your head. Okay, so what, how we're going to kind of separate this out is we're going to talk through the full water distribution system, and we'll talk through kind of that full process, and then we'll mirror that for the wastewater collection system, just so you can kind of get the full process in your head before we go to the next one. So this is just a high-level summary of your existing water distribution system. Again, that's focused mostly on the pipes in the ground, how the water comes out of your faucets and those taps, not water supply. Not so much water treatment, we did that a couple of years ago, we've got some information there. Really, the main thing that I want to point out here is you guys have a complicated system. I mean, there's no way around it. We kind of show there, there's over 200 feet of elevation change, if I can see those numbers right. That, that makes a big difference. When we look about water system, we're most concerned with pressures, and pressures are correlated to elevations. The higher you get, the lower pressure you have, we got to boost it back up to get there. So, you know, pressures look really good around the river where it's nice and low, but as we kind of get up the mountainside or the hillside, there's, there's complications as to how we, you know, serve our customers there. And, you know, because of that complex system, we want to make sure that there's a, you know, good reliability and redundancy and high level of service. So just present some kind of natural challenges for the pretty scenery that we get to experience, so. I won't go too far into those numbers, but they're there if you have any questions or something.
So what's the colors, or is that what you're using the colors to define this?
Yeah, so the, the kind of polygons, we call those pressure planes, yeah. So each one of those is an individual pressure plane, so they're set based off of an elevation, off your elevated storage tanks.
What does that mean?
Yeah, so pressure plane, it's just what, reasonably what elevations could be provided service within this area. So if you've seen them, if you go downtown, you know, you've seen the, the big giant storage tanks. Those are the things that maintain pressure on your system. So as we go through, each pressure plane will have its own tanks and own kind of facilities, and we have to evaluate those independently, as well as kind of together in the system as a whole, so.
What does MG and MGD mean?
Yeah, great question, yeah. So MG is just our shorthand, and MGD, it's million gallons versus million gallons a day. So MG is a storage, that's how we evaluate tanks. And then MGD is a flow rate, that's how we evaluate mostly pump stations, yeah.
So we talked about this a little bit last time when we were talking about water rates, but because of the complexity of our system, just given our natural topography, and it means more lift stations, it means more storage tanks, all of that adds to expense, right? And so that, in conjunction with where our rates are in comparison cities, it's apples and oranges a lot of times.
Yeah, and really, you know, we talk about comparable utilities. For a city your size, your system is very complex. You know, most cities your size don't have this type, especially in Texas, don't have this level of topology that really makes these systems complex. It just means we have to do more analysis and kind of, you know, maintain those capital improvements to provide that reliable level of service, that's our goal, so. Any other questions before I keep going? So first thing, like I said, we're going to kind of just go through the overview of the water master plan, and that starts with data collection. So in order to kind of get an idea of what your system is doing currently, we do what's called pressure testing. We go in, we identified 16 locations, we go out and install a little sensor on a fire hydrant that tells us what the pressure is in the system. And you kind of see them tracking there. It's going to vary, obviously, that varies by pressure plane and kind of service elevation. It's also going to vary by, you know, the capacity in the system itself. We also took a look at available, what's called SCADA information, which is just a digital recording of your tank levels and your pump flow and what the water treatment plant is doing. We looked back, for pressure testing, we did, it was like a two-week study during last summer. And then for all of the other information on our, you know, kind of critical facilities, we looked back through five and even 10 years' worth of data to really get a historical trend and kind of understand how is it that your system is operating and has been historically.
Are you going to be telling us what pressure we need to be having on the lines coming?
Yeah, absolutely, we'll get to that point, but I can answer that question directly. So TCUQ, obviously, is, it's kind of the regulatory agency that dictates that, and their minimum pressure that we have to, in a kind of worst-case scenario situation, we have to maintain 35 PSI. So that, that table there, that chart should at least have the PSI shown there. As you can see, most of these are well above 35 PSI for the most of that, so it's a good thing. And that's, if I didn't say it to kind of, you know, spoil the presentation a little bit, really, your system's in great shape. Your staff has done historically a great job of maintaining the system and providing a high level of reliable service to your customers. We want to make sure that that continues into the future, that's why I'm here.
There's a little gray squiggle up at the top of that chart.
Yeah, so that's going to be, that's going to be a pressure recorder that, as it has really high pressure. So I don't remember exactly where that location is.
Is that one of those lines?
Yeah, so that'll be shown kind of in that map there, and yeah, we can, if you can see that far, I can't see from this far away, but uh, yeah, so that's one of the pressures that'll have high pressures. So what happens is we boost pressure up into the higher pressure planes. You know, maybe there's a low where a creek comes through or something like that, that's at a lower elevation. Well, that elevation is directly correlated to pressure, so that area will experience high pressures. So there are areas in your system, and that's just due to the topography of the area. It's worth noting, none of your customers were not blowing out any of their homes with 160 PSI or whatever it is on that chart. We have what's called pressure-reducing valves, PRBs, to help reduce that back down. The sweet spot's kind of in the 60 to 80 PSI area, which, as you can see, most of your system is maintaining that sweet spot, so. Great question. Okay, so again, data collection, we want to know how your system's operating. We take all of that information, as well as the GIS data, so that's basically just a computer digital record of your existing system lines and pumps and tanks and things like that. And we build a hydraulic model, it's kind of a screenshot of what that model looks like for us, so. What, what that allows us to do, the, bless you. If you've heard the kind of industry term, it's called digital twin, which is really just a fancy way to say, we're taking your existing system and we're replicating it on our computer. And that allows us to perform these really intense analyses and calculations without actually having to change the physical system at all, right? And then we also get to project that out into the future and see, okay, here's how your system's performing currently. This model allows us to project that and say, how do we think it's going to perform in five or 10 or 25 years? So again, just kind of high-level screenshot of the model there. So moving on, we take all that information, as well as the information from the comp plan, and we develop our demand projections, you can see those, those numbers shown. I do want to spend a little bit of time kind of focusing in on this graph. So you can see the kind of dash line that divides between historical information based off of the treatment plan and SCADA information that we have, as well as what we're projecting out into the future. So we'll start with the bottom line, the blue line, that's our average, what we call our average day demand. That's basically, take the total amount of water every gallon that you use over 365 days of the year, what, what is that number in million gallons per day? And as you can see, you've been pretty constant over the last, I think we're showing 10 years here. We're not projecting that to change drastically, that's that 1% growth rate. So as the city grows, you will grow a little bit and that demand rate will increase. It's also, we're noting overall, the trend line is decreasing. What that means is you guys are doing a good job of conserving your water usage. We don't want to account for that in, in terms of, we're trying to be conservative, so we want to make sure we're accounting for that growth. But if you continue to conserve water in the ways that you have historically, that's a good thing. That means that some of these improvements, that maybe if we're recommending that they need to be done in year five, maybe if you can conserve well enough, it's year six, it's money saving in our pocket, right? So overall, historically, you've done a really good job at doing that. I would mostly just encourage you guys to keep doing what you're doing as far as that's concerned. The next lineup is what we call our max day demand. So pick of the 365 days in a year, what's your total highest day of usage? That's the number we're most concerned with, because that's the day that stresses your pumps and your treatment plant and your tanks and your water lines. Everything is stressed out, that's kind of the day that really your system needs to be ready and, and, and ready to handle. So in tip, you know, I think the number that we use to kind of get to that information, it's called a max day peaking factor, but that for most cities is about two, yours is 1.8. So right well within that range, kind of scales up. You can see the historical information. And again, in general, you've been trending down, that's mostly due to water conservation. Your max day demand is always going to be in the summer, it's always going to be when your residents are irrigating. That's your biggest user. And a lot of that is reuse and a lot of the work we've done with the reuse plan and implementing some of those artic golf courses and things like that have brought our potable water demand down over time. That's a good thing, that's cost savings for the city. I do want to kind of point out, if you can think back to last year, you can kind of see 2021, that max day spiked way up, way higher than anything we would have experienced in the system. I won't make you guess, but we know last year, we experienced a storm in February that was a 100-year storm, and we had major issues statewide because of Winter Storm Yuri. That was your max day demand. We're not accounting for that in your system, right? We don't want to plan for, you know, major once-in-a-lifetime freeze and make sure that our water system can kind of handle that. It's not equipped to, and that's not efficient from a cost perspective. But we do want to track that and note that it's, it's well within our range. We're kind of right there in the middle. So maybe we can't handle a 100-year freeze, but we could maybe handle a freeze that we get every 10 to 20 years, something like that. We want to be conservative with how we manage the system, we want to have a built-in factor of safety. We don't want to be so conservative that we have to spend hundreds of millions of dollars every year just to keep up, there's no reason for that. Last one, just to kind of show it, is peak hour is shown there. That's not something that's tracked historically, it's mostly just for our records to kind of evaluate and analyze and include it on that graph as well, so. Any questions with that, and get a drink of water?
So if you don't use historical data to use the peak hour demand projection, what do you use to?
Yeah, that's a great question. So that, that goes back to that SCADA information that we looked at. And just to provide a bit of background, that's the historical information on the operations of the tanks and the pump station, as well as your treatment plant. It's just not tracked on a year-over-year average is what I mean. So I can't tell you what the peak hour was for 2018 or whatever it was. But we still base it off historical data, that's also what our pressure testing was for. Again, rule of thumb is about a two from your max day to your peak hour demand, and y'all are sitting right at a two, so well within kind of the range that we would expect for a system like this. Great question.
What was it, when you were saying how much storage capacity we have, 7.5 million?
Yeah, I could go back to, it's shown on this slide.
Just the numbers, just wanting to keep in mind. Capacity, surface water has 6.7, and then our storage is 7.8.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, so what that allows you to do, right, is total storage, if you've got just shy of 7 million gallons of surface water production, that's from your treatment plant. And then more storage than that, well, you could store a day's worth of your treatment plant production within your system, that's a good thing.
Okay, I just wanted to have that in my head, thank you.
Okay, model, demand projections, all right, so next step, right? So that's all of our data kind of analysis, and we're pulling that stuff in. And now, okay, let's stress the system, what does that look like? I've got a couple of slides and maps here to kind of just show how we evaluated the system. We do that on a couple of different levels. This map here, not quite as pretty as the one we'll show here next, but basically, we take all of your existing customers, we project that out for a maximum day demand. We also have what's called a diurnal pattern that scales up to your peak hour, that's where we use that information. And let's stress the system, let's see with that kind of, with our design criteria, how does your system handle that? And again, keeping in mind TCQ's minimum requirement of 35 PSI. Overall, your system maintains that 35 PSI. I will note, if your, if your eyesight's better than mine, you can't see a handful of nodes that are red here. Most of those are just, you don't maintain 35 PSI on the suction end of a pump because it hasn't been boosted yet, so. You don't have any customers within, or that are under that 35 PSI range, we just kind of documents where those, those areas are next to your pump stations. Okay? So again, really, the high-level analysis of this slide is your system's in good shape. And that's, that's, you know, hats off to your staff for managing that. Next kind of step is, okay, so we're going to take a look at two things here. Don't want to get too into the weeds on this, but this shows we perform a fire flow analysis, as well as a water age analysis, and that's what these two maps are. Mostly, we like to show them because they look pretty. TCQ does not regulate these in any way. It's mostly just, okay, how can we kind of provide that high level of service that we, we desire? So areas that, you know, we're, we're trying to identify areas, potential areas in the system that are deficient. And when we identify those areas, let's improve them and, and, you know, recommend improvements to, to improve the system. And when we ident- identify those areas, let's improve them and and, you know, recommend improvements to to im- improve the system, so. Basically, anything that you see in red, that doesn't mean that those customers in those areas have poor service. It just means that we can provide a higher level of service and have identified some improvements to improve their service, that's what those areas are for, okay?
So when you say a higher level of service, does that mean? More pressure, more pressure for them?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so these, these maps don't show pressure, that's what this map here is for, but yeah, it's well within that range, so. Um, for example, for water age, right, the the areas in red are 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 um. Areas in the system that experience a a water age and that's from leaving the plant to being pulled from the customer of over a week. That's not anyways sort of form um bad water, it's just, you know, that's getting to. Kind of that level of where we would want to improve it, and so we can kind of identify some areas to to provide better service, so. Again, these things aren't regulated by T C Q, it's stuff that we decided. Based off our experience and conversations with staff of how we wanna maintain those levels of service and how we can identify improvements to get there.
So Fred's bad, what's good on this?
Yeah, yeah, um, it basically, anything in yellow is what we consider good, just kind of getting closer to that. Um, orange is, uh, it's not bad, it's just, hey, kind of keep an eye out, and then red is, eh, let's try to figure out how we can improve it. But I do want, I wanna be clear, this is not.
Um, what is best?
Yeah, uh, blue is best, yeah, sorry.
So I think it's also important to note, this isn't an exact city limit line. Uh, this is a water service area, and so some of these are areas that we're actually providing wholesale water service. Uh, and not necessarily, we didn't install that system, we don't really necessarily maintain that water service area. Um, it's, it's simply that we're a supplier, if that makes sense.
But it impacts your system as a whole, that's why we're included.
And you, you told us the two maps, can you identify which one is which?
Yes, um, fire flow is on the left, water age is on the right.
What are all the little red dots on this map?
Yeah, those are your hydrants, so yeah, on the fire flow map, so yeah, obviously, fire flow is is most directly related to fire hydrant, so we just wanna show those.
Okay, so the areas that are in red, where those fire hydrants are, there is fire flow issues there?
No, so yeah, I wanna be clear with that, and I know that that's a little bit confusing, so. Um, obviously, you know, this is not something that we're evaluating, cause I'm not your fire marshal, but. The fire marshal is, you know, ultimately who kind of provides those recommendations, so. It's not to say that anybody in red is gonna have their house burned down, cause we can't fight the fires, that's not at all what this is. Um, really, it's, it's more evaluating the system capacity. And says, okay, well, if we needed a high-demand fire flow user, which would be a commercial or industrial user, could we support them in that area? The areas in red, the answer is no, we would have to do some sort of improvement to support that, okay?
A lot of times, those are maybe existing neighborhoods, uh, that may be at the top of a hill. Uh, and we, so we have alternative methods uh of using a pumper truck or other things to be able to increase capacity in some of those areas.
Yep, and and when the fire trucks go out and connect to those hydrants, they're still able to utilize those hydrants, so again, it's, it's, you know, kind of a sliding scale, uh.
Is there a way to get a more magnified map to see where these areas really are?
Yeah, I mean, we have that information, I think that would be a.
Yeah, we've got it as more of our whole scale, the full report, again, this is just kind of the status update, so, yeah. And so all this went into the analysis as far as, okay, well, how does that translate to C I P projects that we may need to look at?
Right.
And identifying potential.
Yeah, that's right, finding solutions, right?
Yeah, great questions. Anything else? Okay, so um, we per- performed that analysis, that's kind of our hi- uh, desktop analysis, I'll do, I also wanna include. We do, it's called an R B A, that's risk-based assessment, so. That's kind of the hydraulic piece of it, okay, so how do we identify capacity? We also wanna take a look at. Um, risk is a function of condition and criticality, so how important are the facilities and then what shape are they in, right? So we went out, um, your field crews graciously took us around the city for two days as we went and inspected all of your important facilities. So that's tanks, uh, excuse me, we didn't do tanks, cause those were done previously, but. Um, pump stations, wells, lift stations, that kind of thing. And then scored them based off of this kind of detailed matrix criteria to identify which facilities are in the worst condition, which are in the best. Obviously, we wanna improve the worst and maintain the best. Um, so overall, the results of that, I I was, I was the one going out and and doing those inspections, I was very impressed with your water system.
Oh, we want lower numbers.
Yes, yes, that's, that's correct, yeah, five is bad, one is good, and and green is good, um, red, orange, yellow, I think is what I have, uh, is bad, so.
Okay, so those that are in yellow are, um. Prioritized?
Yeah, no, so basically, what what we said and what we recommended is anything that's in red and that would be a four, a score of. Actually, it's a score of three and a half or higher, is something we recommend improvement. So again, yellow is just shown of, yeah, this isn't brand new, it's an older facility. We need to continue to maintain that facility, but we don't recommend any sort of direct kind of improvements to that facility, yeah. So again, I I mean, overall, the system's in really great shape. Um, and you know, hats off to your field crew for kind of man- maintaining that and and staying on top of things and again, providing, providing that high level of service.
So you'll know that River, uh, Lois Street is, that's one of the projects we started recently, so. They're in the design stage right now to replace that tank, and also H Street well, we're doing the rebuild right now, so. It's, it's not a surprise to us to see those as, as ranking up, they're changing the color as to what they're.
Yeah, exactly, and and that's part of it, right, is is we go out in the field and we document the existing condition, right? Well, these guys are, you know, have a list and and part of it is stuff that we're working on to make improvements and some of those are on. So it's mostly some of those higher scores for Lois and H Street, well, we just noted, hey, you guys are doing this thing, well, yeah, we think it still needs to be done, so, that's all that is, so.
Remember, some of these may have been identified previously, right, and in previous master plan efforts, and now they're just sort of moving up the, the critical uh factor, the risk factor. Cause they're ten years older.
Yeah, and that's something that worth note is, you know, obviously, as your system gets older, typical design life for any civil uh infrastructure is fifty years, and so. A lot of your cities kind of with that, well within that range, and as it gets older, things to start to deteriorate and we have to. You know, invest capital to make sure that we maintain those facilities, that's what this is, so. If we were to go back and inspect those facilities that hadn't been touched in ten years, they'd probably get worse, that's how that goes, you know? Luckily, you guys got good field uh staff to keep an eye on those things and have some, some kind of O and M maintenance budget to to get a handle on that, but that's what we're looking at.
Taking a look at the historical data of our condition, so, and this is. And when we get to three, a rating of three is when we need to look at.
Yeah, yeah, I think it was three and a, three point five, but yes.
Okay, so looking at that, th- the historical data of those, uh, of the conditions. How fast do you see them degrading? And how fast do you see us getting to a rating of three point five or anywhere near that?
That's the million dollar question, right, if I can kind of predict that stuff, I I mean, be sitting pretty, but um, no, I think that's a very valid question. Um, so, the answer is it varies, and I know that's not, probably not the answer that you're looking for, but it all depends, so. Some of our recommendations that we made, and and again, not to jump too far ahead, were setting aside some money from an annual standpoint. For city staff to use as needed, as they saw some of these facilities to degrade, because some of them are gonna degrade faster than others. And then some of that money was also to do things proactively, to kind of get in front of that, so, simple things like this, so. Um, if you're not familiar, you know, some well or pump station facilities, not all of the piping and and some of that, um. They're not within a structure, so some of them are exposed to the elements, so something as simple as coating them with a coat of paint. Once a year, every five years, at some sort of regular interval, can help maintain the life of that facility far longer than it was ever intended to be. Um, in service for, so. We're not gonna make those recommendations, cause I'm not out in the field every day and I don't know what's going on, but we wanna make sure that we provide those recommendations to staff, so they can kind of implement that as they see fit. It's a great question. Okay, so, all of this kind of gets wrapped up, oh, I forgot one slide, let me make sure I'm in the right order, there we go, okay. So all of this gets wrapped up, um, into the C I P, I did wanna make one other note. Um, we worked with field staff to generate our work order history, so that's basically, okay, so. Your field staff's going out and they're maintaining line breaks or um, or placing lines or, you know, any sort of work order history that they have to go out and do. Uh, we kind of digitized those, we have five years worth of that data and we generated a heat map, just to kind of show, okay. What areas of the system is, are your, your field staff spending most of their time in? And you can see there are two areas in their system that, tho- those two areas totaled something like eighty percent of the total work orders over the five year period. Yeah, so it's hard to see on the map.
No, I mean, I see the, where they are, the clusters, but what what parts of town is that?
Yeah, so the kind of, the the main line that runs kind of diagonal, that's the the main street, um, forgive me for not knowing the exact street names, but. Sidney Baker, that's right, yeah.
It's just the older parts of town, so.
Okay.
The little ones are Castle area, and then the one uh next to it on the right is, is kind of, um, what's gonna be over there, Walgreens. Uh, area right over here. West of Sidney Baker, and then you got Pascal and, and it's the Clay Street area.
Okay.
Both sides of Town Creek, basically, that that Town Creek Basin area.
West Main area too.
And and one of you mentioned it, but yeah, it's the older parts of your system, right, I mean, that's what we would expect. But so what we're gonna do, and again, we'll kind of get to those recommendations, is we identify potential improvements to those areas. We wanna try to identify a proactive replacement program to have, okay, so we know these lines are breaking, we know why they're breaking, they're old, they're kind of of a. Uh, I don't know, high-risk material, and so we can kind of proactively go through and have a program to address those areas, that's really how we're showing.
Those are also older parts of town that have older street infrastructure, and so as we've ramped up our street replacement reconstruction program. Um, we're trying to make sure those are tied together, uh, and so when we're in there and we're about to go redo a street. We're also have resource to be able to go redo a water line, right, and so it just makes sense so that you're not even having to tear up the street. Two years later when the water line breaks, uh, or vice versa.
You find older materials in here as well?
Yeah, absolutely, yeah, so yeah, so yeah, in general, if you, you kind of go back, I I don't know how interested we are in water system distribution history. But as you go back through the history, there's kind of a preferred material through the decades. And so, yeah, some of those particular decades are worse than others, just cause the material wasn't as robust at the time. So, yeah, we've identified that and I don't think we have a slide, cause we're kind of working through implementing that street and integrating those two things, but that's, that's the process that we're working on now. I'm wanting to make sure, you know, we've got multiple sides of uh public works and wanting to make sure that they're all kind of integrated well. Okay, so big money slide here, um, this is kind of what we've all been getting to, is here's our C I P, so you can kind of see those numbers there. So basically, what we do is we say, okay, we've identified several different projects and go through um. Our areas that are deficient and then we identify projects to improve them and then we estimate costs out to improve those, so you can see those numbers there. Um, this is what we recommend, this is what we're calling our short-term improvement. So it's not that the system is necessarily deficient, like it's gonna break tomorrow or your customers aren't gonna be able to, you know. Shower or what have you, um, tomorrow, but these are areas that we've identified that we need to maintain or we need to implement these improvements in order to maintain our high level of service moving forward. Um, and I do wanna note, and I kind of put this in my notes, um, you are not in. In any evaluation of the water system, you are not in violation of any T C U Q requirements, minimum pressures, pumping, capacity, all of that stuff. So you're good there, and again, that's hats off to your staff for maintaining the system well. We wanna make sure that they can continue to do that in the future, and so that's what those projects are there for. I don't know that we need to go too far into detail into all of these, you know, we've worked hand in hand with staff to make sure that we're providing these recommendations, um. They, yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Are we doing some of these already?
Yeah, so a lot of them are in in progress in some form or fashion, yeah, exactly, so.
It's underway, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah, and I think we talked about that, that's that uh Spring Street river crossing, yeah, so. Yeah, no, that's a great question, so obviously, you know, we performed this analysis, like I said, we've been working on it for a year and a half, it takes time for us to get there and your system's ever-changing. As we go through this process, your staff is continuing to work as we do our analysis. Some of these projects are already in some form or phase of implementation and. We're just really kind of making sure that we're thorough in our documentation of identifying.
And so we haven't identified one necessarily over the other that is priority.
That's a great point, Judy, thank you, um, so these are prioritized, so we do take a look at, that's, that's why this work order history and the condition data as well as the hydraulic analysis, that all goes into. Our kind of general prioritized list, so, project one is a high-service pump station expansion, so the high-service pump station is your pump station at your treatment plant. That serves all of your city. So that's gonna be your kind of most critical system infrastructure, at least as far as the distribution system is concerned. So these are prioritized, we'll get to the point here in a couple of slides. Cause this is just distribution system, we're also gonna talk about wastewater collection, and then we're also gonna talk about treatment, so. We've kind of got to merge all four of those systems and we have kind of a high-level prioritized list for those as well. So, the question is, uh, you know, kind of why we're presenting this information and we'll continue to get through it is. From a funding standpoint, that's kind of our next step to, how quickly can we feasibly implement these? So that's the thing that I, you know, we want to kind of keep in your back of your mind as we go through all of these costs, um, and, you know, Stuart and you, I'll talk about that. Any other questions without going too far into the weeds? So the next step, um, is, we talked a little bit, um, so, let me, just to to reiterate, so this is just our uh. Capital improvements to identify a capacity, as well as kind of integrating condition, we do also have these projects, which are kind of renewal recommendations. Um, so a little bit different, one is kind of a capital improvement of one time fee to to make sure we can provide a high level of service. The other is something, this one is more from an annual basis of, okay, how do we continue to maintain that high level of service into the future? Um, so these projects are relatively high level, you can see a a larger cost item there, that's what we wanna identify to hit those work orders. And unfortunately, um, what we've identified high level is approximately a hundred and eighty thousand linear feet. So converting that to miles, it's like four thousand miles, if I can do that math quickly in my head. It's a lot, right? We can't feasibly do that tomorrow, so the question is, okay, how quickly can we implement uh those improvements? We wanted to identify those and the map that's shown in the background is us kind of highlighting and prioritizing the areas that we think are most important. We're still refining this, again, we gotta implement the streets and that kind of thing. But that's what we're looking at, okay, we know that some of these pipes are getting to their failure age, we need to replace them, we wanna do that in a proactive manner. This is the total number, how quickly and how proactively can we implement those improvements, that's the question.
So again, this is much like our street program, uh, in that, uh, the community's become more robust in. Uh, uh, providing resource on an annual basis, uh, for regular replacement of infrastructure that we know is getting close to its end of its useful life. This is no different, uh, and so it's just trying to get our hand around, what does that total universe look like, so we can begin to develop a program. Uh, where we're more annually and more regularly replacing that infrastructure, rather than, and proactively doing it. Rather than reactively, just when we have uh quite a bit of breaks in an area.
And that, you know, that's the problem when we operate kind of systems from a reactive standpoint, we have to wait for the lines to break. When lines breaks, customers don't have service, we we're spilling water out in the ground that we spent money to treat, so. You know, that's not an efficient way to use that, uh, the, uh, money that we have, so we wanna kind of, you know, transition more to that proactive standpoint, that's what we're moving to. I think we got one more here before we jump into wastewater, so, I do wanna preface this. This is our growth-driven C I P, this is specifically for potential development that we identified that's part of the comp plan. We are not saying that we need to spend any of this money tomorrow or at any point in the short-term future, so the. Really, the purpose of this is we said, okay, we've got all of this potential development that could occur, we don't know when it's gonna occur, how or where. But we want to come up with a plan to empower your staff, is as that development occurs, how do we want our system to look like? In twenty-five years or fifty years, that's what this map is, so we identified it's approximately fifty million. Um, of those projects that need to be implemented, but they'll only come online as the development comes in with the developer, um, footing the majority of that cost. So, it's really just to kind of give us an idea of what it looks like to serve some of these high, you know, potential developments. Kind of, you know, on the outside of the system, as EA mentioned earlier.
Yeah, so again, I just wanna reemphasize that point, when new development comes in, the developer pays those costs. The system as it stands right now and the water customers, like all of you, pay for the existing system, basically, and the maintenance of that system. Uh, and the refurbishment of that system, but new development pays their own freight, uh, when they come in.
But they, they impact the.
They can impact, and so we have now a good idea of depending on where they come in of what those impacts look like. Uh, and that way we can have them, that they've, they've got a good idea of what kind of financial resource they need to be bringing to the table.
And re- and really, like I said, really, this was to get an idea and a plan, or a master plan of, okay, so a developer wants to come out here, well, how does that impact the system? And on a large scale, how do we want the system to best service that? That's what we identified here, the map's kind of covered up, cause it's hard to see at that scale. But we've got lines and projects and new tanks and all sorts of stuff to make sure, you know. Snapshot a bit of what the system might look like in a hundred years, that's kind of what we're looking at, so. Okay, so that's it on water, we'll jump into wastewater, any other questions on the water system?
Prefer not to jump into wastewater.
That's right, that's right, we'll move on.
At least not headfirst.
Well, let's get to it, so again, kind of, we'll follow the same process, just work through the high level and then we'll hit the recommendations there at the end. Uh, so just a high-level analysis of your system and kind of, you know, documenting a couple of those capacities as well. Um, again, you got a complicated system, that's a theme here, um, that topography makes an impact and specifically on uh the wastewater system. Everything's gravity, everything flows downhill, when it hits the bottom of the hill, we gotta pump it back up to the hill. So you guys have a lot of lift stations, especially for a city your size, it's a lot of lift stations, and that's a higher cost and and, um. More difficult to maintain that level of service, so that's what we're at. Um, so same kind of process, we have pressure recorders on the water side, we have what's called flow monitors on the wastewater side. We identified twelve different locations throughout the system to get an idea of how is your wastewater collection system operating. Um, we put those out for a three-month period um last summer. And we wanna do two things when we evaluate flow monitoring. The first is we wanna get an idea of what's the average flow within the system. So, that's the, uh, I believe it's a blue line there, kind of tracking, pretty typical, it'll fluctuate in the day as people wake up and go to work and all of those things. But overall, it kind of sits there, a pretty standard pattern. The second thing that we wanna look at is how does your system respond to uh wet weather events? Unfortunately, our storm sewers are not a hundred percent perfect and they don't capture a hundred percent of the rainfall. Some of that enters into our wastewater collection system and we have to treat that water. Um, so those are the peaks, we're trying to get an idea of when it rains and how much it rains, how does that impact the collection system? So we use the. So we use the flow monitors in those twelve different locations kind of spread throughout the system, as well as SCADA, we have SCADA on your lift stations and treatment plant as well. To get an idea of what are the average conditions and then when it rains and, and we kind of scale that up to what we call a design storm. Um, to, uh, assess the system as a whole, we can kind of project how much wet weather will enter into the collection system. So that's the purpose of flow monitoring. Any questions?
What does RGO mean?
Uh, sorry, go ahead.
RGO.
Yeah, yeah, so that's, um, it is RG zero and that's a one, assuming it's RG one. That's just rain gauge. So, yeah, we have rain gauges, I think we put three, yeah, I was gonna say three, three out in the system, just, you know, when it rains, we collect that data. Then we process it, right? So there's some, um, calculations that go into, okay, so one inch of rainfall corresponds to how much MGD and what's that kind of leakiness factor, we'll talk about that here in a second.
Fortunately, we put these up back when it used to rain.
Yeah, we timed it well last summer, it's a little bit of a, you know, kind of luck of the draw. We put them in there, not knowing what the forecast is and then, you know, do a rain dance and hope that it rains. And sometimes we get lucky. Um, sometimes we don't get so lucky like this summer. I ca- I can't say so, um, you know, we spend a lot of time evaluating rainfall events, especially from a wastewater collection system standpoint. This is, the storm event that we got is by no means the largest storm event that y'all have seen or I have seen, it's not a, a massive event. But it was significant enough that we were able to kind of get good data from it, so. We got lucky, so to speak, we could have gotten luckier, but it definitely could have been worse like this summer, so. Yeah, so, yeah, if you guys got any beads on rain, that'd be great.
I'll just add in here, remember too, that, uh, the city embarked on a first-ever stormwater master plan. And that stormwater drainage, again, as was just, uh, mentioned by, uh, Mr. Shires, that it, that does have an impact, right? And so we've got twenty million dollars worth of stormwater infrastructure needs that, for the most part, really, uh, we don't have a funding source for. But once it makes its way to a manhole and infiltrates the system, we have to treat it. And so there are costs to that, we have to collect it and we have to move down the system, we have to treat it. And so just remember that interplay, uh, of those two, those two interconnected, somewhat interconnected systems.
No, absolutely, I mean, we've seen a correlation between, uh, stormwater systems that are deficient or falling apart and the impact that that plays on the wastewater.
Is it a major impact to us?
Was that?
Is it a major impact?
I wouldn't say major, but it definitely has an impact and those two things are correlated. So if we can button up or identify deficiencies in our stormwater system, that helps protect our wastewater system as well. Like I said, it's never gonna be a hundred percent perfect. Every drop of rain, we can't account for, it's not feasible. The wastewater system's gonna get some of it. That's okay, we're, we're prepared to do that. But if we can, you know, implement some stormwater improvements and send it one way versus the other, we can definitely maximize our cost savings.
It's just another one of those ways, we're trying to match up these master plans to make sure that they are, we're looking, we're not looking at each one in a silo, right? We're looking at the system holistically.
Obviously, yeah, this, this plan was focused on two specific systems, but Public Works encompasses a much larger kind of array of systems. So we, I, I'm not a streets expert, I, you know, I don't know, uh, too much about transportation. But we do want to make sure that we get those individuals involved and incorporate those things. So same kind of deal here, we develop a wastewater collection system model. Again, the digital twin, we're just replicating your existing system to perform analysis on that, just a quick screenshot. They look pretty comparable, the calculations are roughly the same, it's just one's water, one's wastewater.
Just as a reference, these are all manholes, correct?
Uh, that's correct, yeah. So the, yeah, the, you know, the green dots here are manholes, um, then the lines, I believe, are shown in blue. On the water system, you obviously don't have manholes, you have what's called valves, uh, or junctions, and those are shown as the green dots on the water system as well.
What are the olive-green squares?
Uh, yeah, great question, yeah, those are your lift stations, twenty-six lift stations throughout the system, so obviously very important, we want to make sure we incorporate those. I don't know if it's shown on there, but we do have your treatment plant modeled there as well, we just treat that as an outfall, we're not actually modeling the treatment processes. But it is incorporated, we can project out the flows and I think, there you go. So this is the next slide, um, so good segue. Um, we take all of that information, we utilize the projections from your cup plan and the historical information that we have. We project out the flows, um, to impact your system. Again, so we're concerned about average flows and peak wet weather flows from wastewater. Uh, from a treatment plant standpoint, we're mostly only concerned about average flows, so that's why this graph isn't showing the three stair steps like the water one, it's just really the one value. And you can see historically, you've tracked relatively well, a little bit more of kind of that upward uptick, um, than on the water system. And the main factor for that is twofold. Um, conservation has an impact on the wastewater system. So think about if you have a high-efficiency dishwasher or washer machine, um, that uses less water and then when it goes down the drain, it also uses less wastewater. Problem is, our wastewater systems are most sensitive, like we were talking about, to rainfall, especially from a total volume standpoint. So while conservation can help you, uh, on the wastewater system, it's not quite as much as on the waters, uh, water system. So those years with the spikes, if, and again, you know, we live and breathe rainfall data, but I can tell you that those years with the spikes, those were the wetter years, the wetter than average years. Particularly kind of early on in that timeframe, I believe this, this, this figure starts in around the twenty-ten, twenty-twelve timeframe. We were coming out of a drought, right? And that kind of end of that drought had some higher than average or at least what you would have seen historically. And that's where you see that kind of sudden uptick. And then twenty-sixteen was our, our wettest year that we've had in the last twenty years or so, um, so obviously.
Be like down in the negative this year.
That's right, yeah. If only the wastewater system could kind of evaporate and go away.
Same between and the, the majority of that likely is due to, uh, rainfall.
So again, um, kind of the line between historical and projected data, we take a look at your historical information. We want to make sure that we're accounting for that, we want to make sure that we're being conservative, we want to make sure that we're not overly conservative. So I believe that first year that we projected was this year, twenty-twenty-two, um, that taxed right online with what twenty-sixteen was. Twenty-sixteen was an above-average rainfall year, we're incorporating or planning for a slightly above-average, maybe not quite to where twenty-sixteen was. But you've also grown since then, so that's why they're kind of right in line. And then we're projecting that out in the future with that one percent growth rate and the information from the comp plan. Um, the important thing to note here, and that's what the, the dash lines are at the top, that's, uh, TCU does mandate a permitted capacity for your wastewater treatment plant. And they have kind of trigger points, it's seventy-five percent and ninety percent. Um, when we hit that seventy-five percent, that's when it kind of triggers improvements, we're not projecting you to hit that in the next twenty-five-year period. So hats off to your treatment plant, wastewater treatment plant team, they're doing a good job managing that infrastructure and keeping that on top, very, very good shape. Okay, so same kind of thing, we perform kind of, you know, projections and pull in all this data, we evaluate the system. Unfortunately, I don't have any pretty maps on the wastewater side, I guess that's just the nature of wastewater. But we do perform this analysis and kind of trying to stress the system. Like I said, we apply our design storm, we take a look at our historical usage rates, we apply that out of the system and identify areas that are deficient. Um, we kind of show all the lift stations there, those are your kind of most critical assets on your wastewater system, we want to make sure that we're evaluating those. So, uh, we're kind of, we evaluated the, the projected capacity of each lift station, not the projected, the existing capacity, and then what we're projecting those peak flows to be, identifying lift stations that are deficient and then, uh, recommending improvements if they are. There's a screenshot on, just a picture that we took when we were out looking at nap lift station, so.
So those are six, or well, maybe one, two, three, four, five lift stations altogether there?
Oh, no, so, yeah, that's a great question. So, yeah, each one of those is a hatch, um, and it's a, so, uh, uh, you know, I've, apologize for, uh, uh, nerding out on lift stations a little bit, but nap is an interesting lift station. And so each one of those are access hatch for your field crews to go out, and it's kind of a unique configuration that they came up with at the time. It was a retrofitment of the previous lift station, they needed an expansion. So they were kind of, you know, using, uh, some creative and effi- efficient solutions to come up with that. Uh, yeah, it's a cool, cool lift station. That is one of the ones that we are identifying, uh, to be deficient. That's in that area, it's on the north kind of west part of your system, downstream from our wholesale customer, um, up the road. And so that does see a, a fair amount of growth, um, and kind of some capacity issues. So this is one that we are, uh, projecting to, uh, to improve or recommend to improve.
You may remember, we've been moving up the system as far as building capacity. Um, you've got to kind of start at the bottom of the pyramid and work your way up.
Yeah, that's absolutely right. So, yeah, we got, we just finished, uh, the Jefferson Lift Station, we've got a project ongoing um, to do the force main for nap and the gravity main downstream, next one in line is nap, so that's kind of in the, in the, and that's what we're talking about too of like, these are projects that are ongoing, we want to incorporate those, so, uh, we've got that all that. Um, so hydraulic analysis, we also did an RBA on the wastewater system, so again, went out and did field inspections. We didn't inspect all of your wastewater facilities, uh, mostly that's just to be effective with our time. You have invested as a, as a utility, have invested a lot of money in several of your kind of big, larger lift stations over the last five or so years. Well, those are in good shape, we know they're in good shape, they're less than five years old, we're not gonna waste time going out there and taking pictures. So we identified the kind of most critical lift stations that haven't been touched or don't have, um, improvements identified for them. We did want to go out to nap as well because we knew that that, that was a project that was upcoming. Um, it's worth calling out here, unlike your water system, we do have two facilities that we would identify as deficient. Those are your two airport lift stations down on the south side of town. Um, that's a predominantly industrial area, those industrial customers, for whatever processes and stuff that they do, generate some kind of corrosive gases that im- impact the, the wastewater system specifically, lift stations as they kind of sit there. Um, that just eats away on the, on the facility, so we've got to spend money to kind of make sure that that's maintained and in good shape, uh, so that's what those are, those are for.
Use the same condition rating.
Yeah, exactly, so the, the process changed slightly because there's some minor differences between a pump station and a lift station. But overall, the same kind of methodology, again, I think that trigger was three-point-five, um, red being bad and we want to implement improvements and grid is new conditions. Um, so, yeah, again, not to, not to leave the wastewater field guys out in the cold, they're doing a great job too. Um, overall, your system's in great shape, it's just some of these older facilities that have the, the kind of worse loading conditions due to being in an industrial area, those are, you know, just need some more love, basically, more, uh, investment to maintain those, so that's what those are. Okay, any other questions, we'll keep going. So here's the big slide on the wastewater system, we perform all this analysis, we identify improvements to, or identify those deficiencies and then recommend improvements to, uh, address those deficiencies. So do notice is kind of the big thing that'll jump out here, um, this is your short-term capacity improvements that we're recommending. These are things that we want to implement to continue to provide that high level of service moving forward. The CIP is significantly larger than the water CIP, at least from the same perspective. The reason for that is twofold. One, as EA mentioned, we have some identified capacity restrictions. We've known that there are capacity restrictions historically and we're working on implementing those. So the first couple of projects there are projects that were already accounted for and moving forward with. Um, the second piece is that project there at the bottom, um, we have a wholesale customer. That wholesale customer is a major contributor to our wastewater system and we need improvements to continue to provide a high level of service to our wholesale customer. By high level of service, I mostly mean that we don't, uh, we aren't deficient in, in that service to that customer. So we do have to make sure that, you know, we're making recommendations and spending money to provide that service to them as well, so. Questions on that? Uh, these are prioritized and we'll get into kind of next couple of steps, but.
There's still time to buy a lottery ticket.
Exactly. What's it up to, like nine hundred million or something, I think I saw, yes. Okay, so same kind of thing, we identified, uh, capacity improvements, we also have a kind of annual renewal improvement. We aren't, when a wastewater main breaks, it doesn't spew fresh water all over the place, right? So we don't, we, we don't see, um, they're not pressurized either, so we don't kind of see the same deficiencies on the wastewater side that we do on the water side. It's also not as cost-effective to do a proactive, uh, replacement program on a wastewater system, because it's really cheap to go in and put a camera down there. Your field crews have cameras that they can use to inspect the system. So really, all we're recommending is, hey, we want to spend some extra money, make sure that the field crews have adequate O and M budget to kind of go out and maintain that system. It's the same thing of, here's some general recommendations that we identified, we want to make sure that you have, um, some money allocated to implement those improvements as you best see fit. So that's what that, that number is there. Okay, and then same thing, we have a growth-driven CIP. So again, the intent is not that the city needs to spend any money identified on this slide in any point in the near future. It's more to provide that holistic plan of, we know development is coming, when and where it's coming is not, is the unknown piece. So we want to make sure we kind of evaluate that system from a holistic scale and empower your staff to kind of best handle that development as it comes in and make those, uh, educated decisions. Okay, any questions? It's roughly the same, which, you know, kind of tracks, we got to spend roughly the same amount for your growth, uh, for water and wastewater. Um, so the last piece and, and so that kind of, these last slides here end the detailed analysis that we did as part of the water distribution and wastewater collection system. Okay, so the next step is, well, we know that there are more important facilities, um, on the water and wastewater side, i.e. your treatment plants. We want to make sure that we're incorporating those and any sort of recommendations, so. Back in twenty-fourteen, twenty-thirteen, I think it was, we did a detailed evaluation on those treatment plants and there were some recommendations provided. Some of those, the, we've taken off the ones that have been implemented since, um, about half of them roughly. But the ones that haven't, we're still recommending, um, that those be implemented. Uh, we didn't perform or update that analysis, it was very detailed at the time and there's no need. Uh, but those recommendations still hold, so we wanted to make sure that we're kind of incorporating that. So those are just, uh, shown here, and then the important slide is this piece here. So, okay, we've taken all of these recommendations, we've incorporated them, we also have kind of this general prioritized list, so starting at project number one and going all the way down to forty or whatever it is. In general, your most critical facilities are going to be the facilities that service the most amount of your customers. And primarily, that's your water treatment plant and your wastewater treatment plant, right? Because they service the whole system. So we prioritize the recommendations to those facilities first and foremost. If something happens and your treatment plant, either one of them goes down, you cannot provide service to your customers, that's a bad thing. Um, so we want to prioritize those and those recommendations and the results of that previous study, that's kind of at the top of the list. Um, the next piece is, um, from a facility standpoint and an important standpoint is lift stations and pump stations, tanks, things like that. Um, so those recommendations from our study are kind of the next in line and they're kind of laid out in that table there. And then lastly, it's, it's pipelines. Um, unfortunately, we don't want it to happen, but if a water main breaks, that's only one street or a couple of homes that are out of service, right? It's much worse if we have a pump station fail and half the city is out of service. So that's why we prioritize those more critical pieces of infrastructure and maintaining those. Obviously, we want to maintain a high level of service and, and reliability for the, the whole system, but we do have to prioritize a bit as well. And I think I'll kind of let Stuart jump in and, and we'll kind of continue this conversation, but really the question is, okay, so we've identified a hundred and twenty million dollars for water, uh, that's including treatment plants, that needs to be spent. The question is, okay, how quickly can we implement those? I don't think it's reasonable to spend all that by December, right? Like, that's just not gonna happen. But, okay, so that's kind of this next piece of that study, um, as EA and Stuart mentioned, we've got a rate study kind of, I should say, y'all have a rate study um, coming up and that's kind of the path forward that we're going to, so. Um, with that, I've got, like, this slide Stuart's gonna come, talk about path forward. Um, I'll just open it up to questions, I do want to shout out Maya as here as well, as Stuart mentioned, she's EIT and the one that did all this, uh, wonderful work, so. Any questions, anything else, we, head back, Stuart?
You do this in front of other municipalities?
What's that?
You make this presentation to other municipalities?
Yeah, I mean, if we've done their master plans, yeah, absolutely.
You know, we're five volunteers, you have no idea the tools you're using, the analysis you're doing.
Yeah, so, I mean, um, it's kind of, it's, yeah, sure, so it's, it's based off of kind of our, um, expertise and, and, you know, we've kind of ca- uh, discussions with city staff, we kind of cater our recommendations for, you know, each specific utility that we work with. But, yeah, we work with a lot of utilities in central Texas as well, it's kind of Texas as a whole. Yeah, so I think overall, um, like I said, y'all's systems are in good shape, Texas is growing a lot, you know? And so we have to make kind of, make sure that we're investing that infrastructure to continue to maintain that high level of service, so.
I think it's important to, and we'll talk, sort of talk about it more, um, I know that's a shocking number, right? When you look at a hundred and twenty-two million, I think you've got to also remember, that's over a twenty-five-year or longer lifespan, right? And so, um, that's not, you couldn't go implement, if we had a hundred and twenty-two million dollar check, we couldn't go start to implement that, uh, next year, right? Uh, and so there's some logical progressions working through that, and it's got to be matched up with what the community can afford as well, right? So, um, and we'll talk through that, that's next steps, right? Uh, but we wanted to let you know that we've done the analysis, we know what the risks are. Uh, and that, uh, we, we now know what the universe is, uh, and so you can start to take some bites at it.
And I like what EA, what you mentioned earlier, that kind of proactive management of the system, that's the intent of this study. We want to kind of provide your staff and you as a council with the best pa- plan and path forward. And then you can kind of go and implement those decisions as you best see fit, so that's really all here to do.
What we don't want to do is have the community twenty-five years from now go, well, why didn't we know this was gonna be an issue, right?
Oh, it's vitally, vitally important that we do this, so, yes.
So thank you for your time and, yeah, if you don't have any questions.
So to answer your question, uh, Mr. Herring, better is, Freezing Nichols does, they only work for municipal, or for municipalities, they don't work for developers, and so that helps us a lot, gets us a good feel for, hey, they really represent the municipal side of it and so the developer side. Because there's always, there's always two sides to every coin, so we want somebody in their capacity that actually understands our, our needs and our wants and able to scope out the system where it's gonna work efficiently for us.
I suppose my point was, I lack an engineering team, you know, I'm trying to follow along. I understand some of the numbers, but it's gonna be hard for me to evaluate the tools and the methods used to present this information.
Sure, and that's what we've done, we've done it in-house, and if we didn't agree with these, with their findings, then y'all wouldn't be seeing them today, so.
But we will also, as time goes on, there's more information that enters into.
We got it, we got a book about that big that you guys can go through in detail if you'd like to. For today, for nature of time, we wanted to give it to at least high level.
Actually, there is a test later, isn't it?
It's every two years.
Um, so with that, we'll talk a little bit about the next steps, you know, what's gonna happen next, uh, as, as EA was saying earlier, you know, a hundred, even if y'all had a hundred if we all had a hundred million dollars, would we do this, and the answer is no, we, we just don't have the staff to do it all. So we're gonna bite it off in incremental pieces, y'all will see that in your budget process, you know, we're, we're gonna come to y'all with a, um, affordable budget. Affordable for our standard, you know, as, as we have some needs, there are some things, uh, that we'll be able to hopefully justify for you and say, hey, these are the, this is what we need, uh, for operations for the next few years, so, and hopefully we'll be able to get that to you in, in a, in a way Julie will be working on it, she's working on it right now as a matter of fact, so. Uh, uh, one of the, one of the benefits, if council was, is to adopt this plan, or when you adopt this plan, this is not the final draft. We'll incorporate any comments y'all have that come out of this meeting, or over next week or so, as y'all are able to dive into a little bit more and digest it more if you're, you're willing or wanting to. Uh, we'll incorporate all that into the final draft, and then when developers come to town, we're able to use this. We can, I can roll this out on my desk and say, hey, you know, council, we, we presented this to council, council thinks this is a logical way for the city to grow. We think these are developer driven projects, or a city driven project, or however that kind of lays out and gives them some, um, foresight as to what they need to bring to the table to pay for their development, and so it's really helpful for us. As a matter of fact, we just met with some developers today for, was it two hours? Um, going over, uh, what, what we thought their cost needs to be, and, uh, as you can imagine, they, they don't wanna pay. Or, these guys, they're, they're interested in paying something, but, you know, finding that middle ground, it is pretty hard to do. Uh, so that brings us up to that third bullet point, we have some additional services by Freezing Nichols, um, that were scoped in their original fee, but not funded. One of them is an impact fee, and that impact fee, um, if cha- if council decides to move forward with it. It would break, it would incorporate some of these costs into a, a, um, an impact fee, which individuals end up paying before they tie onto the system, it's a state, I mean, if, it's a, it's a state regulated process that says of every portion of a project can be, um, billed against your impact. It's the impact to the system, and a new, new property owners that are buying homes have to pay that impact fee. And so if we take this and go through, we can do it a couple of different ways, you know, it's still the same process, still state requires you to do uh, kind of vet all this out through this process. You take your CIP like we've done here, and evaluate it, and figure out how much does it cost to have an LUE for it to come into the city of Kerrville. And then either you can implement your own impact fee, or you can just use that number, city manager's office can use it to help him determine how much should we charge these people, how much should they be paying as they tie onto our system?
Do we have, you're saying, we said state mandated, so do we charge an impact fee right now? Is that what you meant by state mandated?
It, it's not, the process isn't state, or the, the process is state mandated, it's not required that you do it.
And so do we do it right now?
We don't do it right now.
So we require development, new development that comes in has to completely provide every bit of infrastructure improvement for their development. Then they deed that infrastructure over to the city, and the city maintains that system ongoing, there's other communities that do that different ways. So there's some communities, uh, faster growth communities typically, uh, they may have anywhere from an eight thousand to a twelve thousand dollar per LUE, uh, impact fee. Uh, then it puts the burden on the city to actually do the improvements.
Remind me what LUE means.
Living unit equivalent, so.
For each tap?
Per single family unit essentially, or per multifamily unit, they have to pay per a, uh, a unit cost, an impact fee per unit.
If we want to, to have that, then we have to follow this state.
Different process, right, exactly, yeah, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of different nuances to that. Kerrville has not traditionally done that, cause it's not traditionally been a fast growth community, right? And so, uh, it's been at kind of a steady clip, and it's been a lot of infill development. Uh, and so the, for the non-infill development, the development that has been more on the periphery of the community. They've had to pay the full impact and actually perform the construction project themselves, and then just deed it over to the city. Uh, but different communities do it in different ways, uh, and, and certainly it's something we want to be analyzing, so we understand the full breadth of, of what future costs are.
So we would be having a tap fee and an impact fee?
Yeah, tap fee is totally separate, right?
So those would both be cost to a development coming in?
If the, if the community desired to implement an impact fee, we just wanna get a handle of what that cost actually looks like.
An impact fee doesn't replace a tap fee.
That's correct, two separate things. Tap fee is simply, uh, the installation cost of somebody's tap.
So what you're doing is just, this is asking us to approve, looking at what it would look like, to do an analysis of.
Yeah, we've already actually got it scoped, uh, we're just letting you know, again, this is just a status update, so we've done, uh, at this point in time. We've done really what that universe of, of different items are in the future, uh, and knowing what those costs are. Um, we, the, uh, these additional analyses, um, components are ones that we're now about to embark on, now that we know what some of those costs are. Uh, we can get a better idea of what would an impact fee look like, right? What does that wholesale analysis look like as far as the impact to our system for some of those wholesale providers uh, that we're providing outside of our city limits and outside of our service area, uh, and just getting, just, th- those are some weird nuances to Kerrville's system, uh, that we wanna make sure we've got a full, full breadth of knowledge to be able to present to you all going forward.
So I guess I'm confused on, I mean, I feel like the presentation ga- gave us, gave us the the way that our system is now.
Correct.
Right, and then, and then you're saying that the impact in fee is steady and the wholesale analysis are going to move ahead.
Those are just separate add-on items that we're now about to embark on now that we have this.
If I embark, you mean, like, we don't have to say yes, do this, or no, don't do this, you have the data, so you're just kind of taking it and processing it in these ways now?
Correct.
And so, I guess my question was, if we had this presentation, and I've heard a couple of times that things may be, um, updated, changed, or added to this final product based on council input. I'm not sure what input you're looking for maybe from council.
So, yeah, really at this point, uh, you know, the, the, uh, the general feedback we're getting from you all is that we're on track, uh, that you guys feel, uh, generally comfortable with, um, you know, the, the, uh, process that we've embarked on. Um, and we're, we're really, really, pretty close to ready to deliver to you guys, um, you know, the bulk of the study. Uh, and again, this was kind of the high level, um, piece of it, but, uh, we'll get you guys, um, the full books, uh, and that, you know, we're, we're we're ready for adoption really in the next, uh, you know, six to eight weeks.
So with the, this analysis, they will be working with you, Freezing Nichols?
Correct.
To, to, to come back.
Yeah, the ancillary analyses, that's correct, yeah, absolutely, and we're, we're, that's not gonna slow down the master plan induction process, we wouldn't necessarily think that that needs to be a part of that, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll come back to you all with those, almost as kind of separate, smaller add-on analysis, yeah.
Yeah, the question here is, is if do we wanna move forward with those analysis, not, not the question tonight, but this is, that's the next piece of the, the next steps that we're looking at.
Right, and so when you're saying, you, the prioritization, that's not, you're not saying that we have to do them in this order. You've just prioritized, and we're not locking into anything.
So in their, in their scope and fee, they gave us some, some things that we asked for as to how, you know, next step, like the city of Ingram, if you will, and their wastewater analysis, when we looked at their numbers, it's kind of hard to see it. Ingram had some big numbers on there. So if you see that last.
Nineteen million.
Is that, how much of that really, um, is, is all for Ingram? Or is it, is there some, some benefit of the city in there, and if there is, what are, you know, what are those, you know, how much should we charge Ingram? How much do we charge ourselves, or what is those, how does that all kind of shake out? And so it's just better understanding some of those, some of those costs, and, and how we're gonna, how we're gonna address them. We'll be, we, we're not asking a, the question right now, but just tell you that's, that's the, that's the next steps as, as we move through this process, so. We got the lion's share of it done here, and, uh, this pre- this presentation tells you about how your system, the, the system um, water pipes out there more so than the plant looks, but it also incorporates what we're gonna do at the plants and why. And also, uh, what we do out in the distribution system in the future, so, that'll be that CIP, the implementation of the CIP and how we.
Well, and, and, and the total number was like a hundred and twenty two million. That equates to about four point nine million a year for twenty five years.
Now remember, with tw- things now are gonna cost different than they do twenty five years from now, right? You gotta factor some of that in.
I know, I'm having sticker shock right now, it's, it's like, I mean, this is, you know, how are we gonna fund this? Are we gonna get grants, are we gonna get, you know?
Fast forward just a little bit Stuart, so that's some of that next step process, right? So what we wanna talk to you guys about, obviously, some of these things are incorporated within your existing CIP, uh, budget, right? So we talked about that big water fund sheet, right, so, um, that's part of your next steps, uh, the other part is adopting overall, the, the, the plan of attack, right? Uh, and then also coming in and talking to you about where, where rates are at, right? Again, this is a business, and businesses invest in themselves, right? Most businesses carry some debt to invest in themselves over the next twenty five years, uh, and the systems that they have. And so, uh, we wanna talk to you guys with, uh, about where we're at, uh, within our debt cycle, um, how that debt ladders off over that next twenty five years and what that looks like, uh, and, and how we could reasonably, um, uh, factor in investing in ourselves over that next twenty five years. So all, all more to come, uh, but again, just wanna give you a high level status of data, what, what the universe looks like, right?
So you need nothing else from us tonight.
No action tonight.
Try to absorb.
Absorb, that's right, first bite, first bite at the apple.
Figure, it's good, I'm good.
It's good information, and I mean, it's interesting information, and, and, uh, as to where all the pumps are, and, and not that we need to know all of that, but it's just interesting to know.
Well, and the complexity of the system.
Yes, yes, exactly.
And, and again, big kudos, uh, both to Stuart and his staff, as well as Freezing Nichols, uh, cause this has been an extensive effort. And it's been happening kind of behind the scenes over the last eighteen months with all the other things going on, uh, but there's been a ton of work that has gone into this assessment. It'll pay long-term dividends for this community going forward.
With, without this information.
Oh, I, I interrupted you, I'm sorry.
Without this information, we, we can't, it's, it would be almost impossible for us to talk to developers to recoup any of these costs.
Right, right.
Um, so recently, we've had any, you know, developers, infill developers that are paying almost nothing offsite, all the way up to it maybe twenty, twenty-five million dollars worth of offsite stuff they gotta do. This, this kind of information allows us to tell them what that looks like.
Well, and gives our citizens that level of comfort too, that we understand what the costs are bringing in this new development. That's important, we hear that a lot as council members, I think, you know, so. Very good.
Thank y'all.
I thank all of you, yes.
Thanks for your time, more to come.
Okay, uh, anything else at this time? All right, we will close the workshop at five twenty-three. And we will adjourn upstairs for, let me find it here, the, uh, Employee Benefits Trust Meeting.